Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I'd like to call to order the Everett City Council meeting of April 5th, 2023. Let's see, before we begin, we've received several comments related to the county purchase of the Hope Church, and I want to notify our residents and citizens that we are working with the county to provide council and the community a briefing on their proposed purchase. It was our hope to have that briefing tonight at the Health and Human Services Committee, but unfortunately, the county was not available. We continue to work with the county to schedule a date for a city council briefing in the near future. We're hoping, we are pushing them, hopefully that could happen next week, but we'll keep you informed of that, so watch for our agenda, because it may update even after it gets published. The city council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Public Meetings Act. Community members are welcome to join either in person via Zoom or by calling in. For those who wish to participate in the future via Zoom, you'll find instructions to register for public comment on the City of Everett website under the City Council Department. Please note, we do not allow comments on any kind of campaigning, whether for or against ballot measures or candidates running for office. We also do not accept comments focused on personal matters that are unrelated to city business. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Franklin?
Excused.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Tuie?
Here.
Councilmember Fosse?
Here.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Here.
President Stonecifer?
Here. Councilmember Schwab, would you please lead us in the flag sleeve?
It's my honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilmember Vogli, would you please read the land acknowledgement this evening?
Most certainly. The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shtehoch people, and their successors, the Tleilip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of March 29th, 2023?
Councilmember Ryan, some moves.
Councilmember Tuie, seconds.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. Welcome, Deb Williams. You're back in the saddle tonight. Do we have anyone signed up to speak this evening?
We do. President Stonecifer, we've received several comments from the community regarding the county purchase of the Hope Covenant Church. Those are Amanda Van Hook, Katie Schaefer, Walter Scott, Linda Erickson, Kim Caliber. She actually sent from two different emails. Craig Ogul, Daniel Sullivan, Joel Miller, Annette Kerber, and Ann Burns. And then we have two community members that are here in the audience that wish to speak on item seven, but they would like to speak now instead of waiting until item seven. When I call your name, please come to the podium. Please begin by giving your name and your city, and please limit your comments to three minutes. And the first one is Mary Rollins.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Mary Rollins, City of Everett, District 2. I wanted to speak and elaborate on what I said last week about the adopt and ordinance criminalizing the intentional obstruction of city public works. As I thought this through and remembering the comments that were made, the examples that were given for criminalizing this, they didn't seem to fall in the same area as what was being asked. In other words, that sometimes these were emergencies that had to be handled now, and people interfering would cause them the need to have this criminalized. But the examples didn't fall under that emergency need to be done now that I could ascertain from hearing the testimony that was given last week. So I just really want you to think about what's being asked here. Now, there are other people that are listed that have special privileges. I think animal control was one, and that seems pretty emergent to me. But if this goes forward, then why not have a blanket notation for everybody in our city that's doing this work? Because anytime there's an emergency, it's emergent, okay? So I don't know why we have to call this out, except that the city workers work here, they can come here, they can make presentations here. So are we going to open the door to everybody else coming forward from, you know, the planning department people that have to go on site sometimes, or for the people from the library? Do they need to come here? Somebody said, well, you know, we can look at this down the line. But why? Let's just do it. Do it all now. Or just say, from what they told us last week, calling the police or trying to de-escalate a situation, none of these seemed emergent enough to warrant taking this the full direction it's going. So that's what I have on it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Paula?
Paula Townsall, resident of Everett's District 3, also here to speak on the same issue that we were hearing about last week regarding protections for public works employees. Mostly, I am concerned because I am a land use planner by profession. I am a stickler for the code, and I think we should read it more often, and I think we should enjoy it a little bit more. Consistency is important. Last week, we heard, and I do believe that staff did a great job in preparing their presentation and giving us the information, but I am concerned about some of the facts that we did learn. We have other staff in City of Everett, like Park Rangers, Watershed Patrol, Animal Control, and now we're proposing to include public works employees. But we're not proposing to include everyone equally. For example, animal control officers, who am I sure, face a lot of all kinds of behavior when they're out in the public. A violation of confronting them and threatening them can constitute a misdemeanor, which is going to be 90 days, up to 90 days, or $1,000. But that same code, Watershed Patrol, when you obstruct them, it's a gross misdemeanor. So that's grossly indifferent compared to what we're proposing for the Park Rangers. Now, I think of the three of them, Park Rangers might have the worst job out there when it comes to having to deal with the public and telling them what they can and can't do and taking threatened behaviors from them. Would you believe, when you look at Park Ranger, what the penalty is for obstructing and interfering with them? Well, there is none. We managed to get Section A where we say it's not okay to do it. We prohibit it. And in Section B, we talk about hindering, delaying, or obstructing, but somebody forgot to put in Section C where there's a penalty for it. So they're not protected with a penalty, just you're told it's not okay, and it can be pulled up in code to show that. So when we look at public works, do we really want to add one more section for one more group? Or do we need to look at Everett as a whole? Do we need to find a way to say, none of our employees can be threatened? It's not okay when they're doing their duties and it is obvious there are certain things that should be done, and the public has to respect that in not threatening them? Perhaps we need to look, instead of protecting the public works employees, with this new added code, which is under Section 10, which I'm not sure why it's there. It's in the same category as the law enforcement officers, but not in the same categories as Watershed Patrol, Park Ranger, or Animal Control. I think there are some issues with adding this code as it's written. I would suggest a little bit of a deeper dive on the part of staff and the council before we actually pass something along those lines. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. President Stonecifer, those are all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move to council comments and liaison reports, starting with Councilmember Arlingo.
Let's see. Well, I'll have a little bit longer comment to make a bit later on, an action item, but in the short term, I guess I appreciate the questions the commenters raised, and one of the other elements that I think might be practically important in this, and I won't put Mr. Sasse on the spot here, but I will say that I can imagine the typical situation for most of these workers is that if they are obstructed or their access contested, and it isn't critical, that their first step would be to say, well, let's step back a minute and see if we really need to do this, or if there's another way. And I'm always cautious about trying to do too much procedurally if the real answer is good management and good behavior and a well-organized team. So I guess I'll raise that as an issue here that maybe, that may be an element that we haven't considered enough, is that the normal process, where we assume that we invoke these kinds of penalties and sanctions when we need to, and that they aren't done typically otherwise. And by the time that they're invoked, in most cases, there's been some real problem over some length of time. So I offer that as another piece of this context, and maybe I do it because I think that's probably what happens most of the time. But I do take seriously the questions about the overall integrity of the process and the unified, the desire for unified nature.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. This week, I attended the Parks Board Commissioners Quarterly Meeting, and at this meeting, they closed the public hearing for the commission members to look over the special use permit request from the Seattle Outboard Association for a two-day hydroplane event at Silver Lake. And there was a number of comments that were received by park staffs that were shared with the commission members and a couple of folks that showed up at the meeting virtually to provide testimony. So after a public hearing, the commission members that were present voted unanimously to approve the two-day permit. So that will be coming before council, I believe, the 19th. There we go. Ahead nod from Bob. That'll come before council on the 19th for us to either approve or not approve the recommendation from the Parks Board, so just a heads up on that. I also wanted to mention a little bit about the Hope Church emails that we've been getting I first learned about the potential for the county to purchase Hope Church when a reporter approached me in February, so I've been doing my best to glean information since then, but largely, it's been a discussion between the county and the Hope Church owners. And so they're in the process, the routine process of reaching out to community members and had done some flyering, which then ended up getting a lot of traction. So they had their first committee, a community meeting, last night, and while the county was expecting 15 to 20 people, there ended up being 90 people that attended the meeting. And there was a lot of frustrations about the lack of elected officials at the meeting, so I wanted to address that this evening. I found out about the meeting halfway through, and somebody texted me to ask me if I was in attendance. And today, I met with county officials to ask them more about the intent and the process. And so they had shared that they were intending on it being more of an intimate discussion with community members, and that, and then after they received input from community members, then involvement from local elected officials would be needed to hear more about what the community had to say. So it wasn't that elected officials didn't want to come, it's that we just were not aware of the process. I really wanted to make that clear. There is another community meeting this evening, and I'm curious to hear how it turns out. And then there's a tentative meeting planned for Friday and Monday, but I haven't heard any details on where or when that might be held. So I just wanted to address that really quickly and just share that I think all of us really want to make sure that we're addressing the issue of homelessness in our community, and we hear our residents' concerns, and that when we are properly informed on proceedings, we are more than happy to participate and engage with the community to be able to ensure that accurate information is shared. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Tuie?
Yes. Thank you for those comments. Councilmember Ryan, I too had reached out to the county last week to find out when the meetings were and hadn't heard yet, so I will hopefully be there on Friday, and we'll take care of that. I attended, I had an interview with the Salary Commission last Friday, and council president, and I met with Paula Townsall on Thursday for our First District Commission Handbook meeting. And Paula's doing a lot of great background work, and we really came up with a pretty good game plan, so I'm looking forward to that. We had our Health and Human Services Committee meeting before this, and I would like to, I did appreciate what our speakers talked about, and I would like to suggest that we pull item number seven and maybe send it to the Safety Committee, the Safe Community Committee, for review to see if we need to expand on it and see if we can't align everything so it's more cohesive.
Yes, and I'll ask your co-chair if he also would be amenable to adding that to your committee's assignment.
I would.
Thank you. Yes, we will do that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Fosse?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwab?
Yes, thank you. I did, I also did, I had an interview with the Salary Commission, and that was Friday, I think. Also, I just wanted to just update on the Safe Communities Committee. We had a lot of discussion, and you can see it online as we discussed last week, but the plan is to have a briefing on the consumption laws in the state and the effects of it. And we're preliminarily scheduled to have that briefing next Wednesday. So there's, we do have, there's some ideas about ordinances, and you'll hear more in the briefing, but the state is also working on some items, too, so we just have, we're just going to continue that discussion. That and the potential buffer zones around service providing, certain service providing organizations, and we're not sure how that's going, we're just, we're just sifting through that, and so just doing some heavy lifting and working with staff, so just want to give you update on that. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vogli?
Thank you very much. I'm super happy to hear that item number seven will be going to committee, and so I don't have much to say on that now. And I just wanted to mention that on this day in 1994, Kurt Cobain took his own life by a gun, and he was really a voice of so many people, including myself. So I'm just shouting out grunge rock and people that care about other people, because he actually did. It was pretty amazing. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a couple things. First of all, Council Vice President Tuie mentioned that she and I met with Paula Townsall about the development of the redistricting handbook. Thank you, Paula, for your time. And this is just kind of to kick off the process of responding both to the letter we received from the League of Women Voters and also to kind of think about how the redistricting process will come about at a time when we won't be here on council, or at least I won't be here on council. And so that was one of the task force items that came out of our retreat, as everyone knows, so I'm glad we've got that kicked off. And we've got some work ahead of us, but I think we've got a good strategy for that. The other two working groups that were conceived of at the retreat had to do with the creation of guidelines for communication, AKA the Code of Conduct. And Councilmember Tuie was the only one who volunteered to work on that, so she and I met with regard to that and have drafted some language on that. And then with regard to the remote participation in our council meetings by council members, obviously, we're allowing the staff to do that. Councilmember Schwab also agreed to work on that working group, so he and Vice President Tuie and I met regarding that and then have drafted some language. All of those languages, so it's taken some time because we had a few, only a few people working, that is all at the city attorney's office. They're putting together our draft of our updated council procedures. Councilmember Ryan also sent, after we'd pretty much gotten our thing together, but anyway, we did incorporate some of Councilmember Ryan's language that she sent over with regard to these items as well. So we've got mashed it all together. The city attorney's office is working on that, and then we will see, hopefully, at our next meeting, if not then on the 19th, our revised procedures for our consideration. And then as we're doing that, we are, in talking with administration about council member remote participation, they have some legitimate kind of technical and just procedural and just some concerns that they're wanting to kind of iron out, figure out, do they need more equipment or different technology, and how are we going to manage the technology of that? So they have proposed, and I think it's a good idea, to do a trial run of a remote council member, and they've asked for just one council member. So I've asked if Councilmember Fosse would be willing to be our guinea pig for that, and we will do that either on April 12th or April 19th, so we'll figure out which of those meetings works best for us to kind of give it a trial run when we have all the people in administration that will be involved in that process. So I just wanted to let my colleagues know that, and if anybody has any concerns, you don't have to say them here, you can talk to me after the meeting, but I think it'd be nice for us to give it a go, see what is going to be needed, and kind of get administration thinking about how the technology piece is going to work and what the staffing model will look like for that, because they may need more people to handle that. So if anyone has any objections or concerns with that, you can talk to me afterwards. That's all I have, and we have an administrative update this evening.
No administrative update tonight.
Thank you. And Mr. Rammerman, what does the city attorney's office have for us this evening?
No comment, but we are going to be asking for an executive session to discuss two matters related to litigation pursuant to RCW 4230-110-sub-1-sub-I, with possible action to follow.
Thank you. And how long will that session be?
Sorry, for 20 minutes. Thank you.
Let's move on to our agenda. Before taking a motion for the six consent items, Councilmember Arlingo asked if we would move item six to the action agenda so we could have some discussion about that. So I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items one through five.
Councilmember Ryan makes a motion to approve consent agenda items one through five.
Vogli, seconds.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Please take the roll.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. And we have four proposed action items. Items nine and 10 are first readings, so I will read those into the record. Item nine is Council Bill 2304-20, first reading. Adopt an ordinance creating a special construction...
Sorry. Where are you? Nine?
Item nine.
Didn't you just do one through five?
I'm sorry, I'm reading, no, item seven, eight are second readings. We are doing number five. Yes, I'm going to move, item six is going to action. These are proposed action. Sorry for the confusion. Item nine, Council Bill 2304-20, first reading. Adopt an ordinance creating a special construction project entitled Everett Performing Arts Center Building Envelope Improvement Project, Fund 342, Program 039, to accumulate design costs for the project. Third and final reading on this will be April 19th. And item 10 is Council Bill 2303-21. This is the first and second reading. Adopt an ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled WPCF Bar Screen Upgrades, Fund 336, Program 027, and repealing ordinance number 3824-21. Third and final reading on this will be on April 12th. So those are that. Items seven through 10 are proposed action. Do we have any questions or comments on proposed action? Councilmember Vogli?
So apologies for all of that "what are you doing" bit, but also, we have a different printout, and I don't like it. So, but that's not the question. Nine, Performing Arts Center Building Envelope Improvement Ordinance. I was reading through it, and there's some, well, anyways, I just wondered what happened to it, because it sounds like it got deconstructed, not on purpose. So that is a curiosity question, if anybody has an answer.
I see. We have Bob Leonard here to help us with that. Good evening, Bob.
Bob Leonard, Parks and Facilities. And I'm sorry, can you?
Restate that question?
Yeah, restate or rephrase. I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to.
So, okay, let's see, let's go over to, oh, these aren't numbered either. Things are different today. The Everett Performing Arts Center Building Envelope Improvement Ordinance, I don't know what an envelope is, but...
Just referring to the outside of the building, basically.
Okay, because that, an envelope goes around a letter. Something happened to it when I was reading in it, in the, in number nine, and these aren't numbered like they usually are, so I can't...
I'd just say that nothing has happened to the building, it's just age.
Oh, okay.
We're just doing repairs based on needed, just because of the age of the building.
Okay. It sounded like something had happened, and I didn't know what happened, so thank you. It's just age. I appreciate that. That's all.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on proposed action items? Good evening, Ryan.
Good evening. Ryan Sasse with Public Works. I would like to take this opportunity to try and correct and clarify a response that I gave at council last week, just for clarity. The question was regarding, in the context of the water and sewer revenue bond, and the question was about projects that may have been delayed or progressed slower affecting that bond. We currently have two different bond issues that are being considered. One is a general obligation bond that affects our general fund projects, and one was the proper context of the water and sewer bond. And my answer, I ended up answering both, and I'm afraid it probably created confusion rather than clarity. On the general obligation side, we have, are contemplating a future bond to help supplement funding for Maryland Ring Creek and the Edgewater Bridges and some other general fund projects. And so I answered a question essentially you didn't ask, which was about that, and fortunately, we've been able to accumulate additional grant funds over time, and then Edgewater being delayed for a year through process has resulted that that hasn't come to fruition, and it remains to be seen whether we'll need that or not. With regard to the water and sewer bond that is refunding utility for projects that were cash funded, as you may recall, we deferred multiple water and sewer projects in conjunction with our midterm rate adjustment last November that was approved by council. And so it's not any one project at all, it's rather that we deferred many projects so that we could reduce the amount of increase for the midterm rate adjustment, and that's the result of the effect on the bond for the water and sewer utility.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the proposed action items? We will move on to our action agenda. We're going to start with item six that we're pulling down from the consent agenda. I'll read the item. Adopt a resolution setting May 31st, 2023, at 6:30 PM as the date and time to hold the public hearing to hear and determine the petition for the proposed vacation of the remaining alleys in the block bounded by Rockefeller Avenue on the west, Oak Avenue on the, Oaks Avenue on the east, Pacific Avenue on the north, and 32nd Street on the south. Do I hear a motion?
Councilmember Ryan, some moves.
One second.
Seconded.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments? Councilmembers Arlingo, I'll let you begin.
Thank you. So the, as noted, the actual discussion for this in detail will be on the 31st, but in some ways, it's timely now, and I want to make a few summary comments because of a number of issues that relate to each other now, and some are a little more urgent than others. And it all relates to handling growth density in different parts of our city, and specifically the character and integrity of our neighborhoods. Now, the item and question here is specifically about the city vacating or... Now, the item and question here is specifically about the city vacating or giving up access to alleys in the middle of a large block downtown. It's just south of Pacific between Rockefeller and Oaks. Their request to vacate the alleys is to enable the construction, it will vacate all of the alleys, the remaining ones on that block, to enable the construction of a large apartment building, over 220 units, five stories of residences on top of two stories of parking structure, one of which will be underground. With other recent multifamily developments, large ones, it focuses density and growth on where we have, what we need to support it, and to do that as efficiently as we can. Developments like this, and similar ones in other core portions of the city, including the riverfront, the waterfront, and as another prominent example, the 400-plus apartments now being constructed at the intersection of Evergreen Way and the Boeing Freeway, they're the principal way we're going to address the serious imbalance of supply and demand that's been driving housing costs and homelessness. Importantly, these developments are all being situated with appropriate access to major arterials, transit services, businesses, other businesses, supporting businesses and utilities. Now, the reason this is timely, and the reason I'm commenting on it tonight, is reflected in the discussions I've had at multiple neighborhood meetings in the past week and recent weeks, and the first of our council planning and built environment committee. Things such as accessory dwelling units and more areas targeted for the range of middle income, of middle housing options. Through its planning commission and council involvement, the city is looking at how to accommodate a range of growth options and increasing density. But importantly, while paying attention to the health and character of our neighborhoods, we're considering things like traffic, parking, still need parking, and utilities, reasonable transitions between commercial, higher and lower density multifamily developments, and areas that have been lower density single-family housing. Now, it's timely now because of state measures that would take these choices out of our hands, preempting our efforts effectively removing single-family zoning and mandating the approval of fourplexes in all single-family zones, and sixplexes in some of these zones which are close to frequent transit. I want to say that I'm in favor of increasing density to handle growth, especially where we can do it, where we want it closer to downtown, where there are lots of facilities, transit, and that sort of thing, such as the development here at Pacific that's requesting the vacation of the alleyways. This makes it possible for our kids and our grandkids and new arrivals to live and work here. I think we can develop plenty of new housing and take advantage of the skills, initiative, and risk capital, and risk appetite of our builders and developers, both small scale and larger scale, those doing from duplexes on up through these multi-hundred unit apartments. I'm speaking because I want to call attention to the measures now before us at the state level, and want our community members to be knowledgeable and involved in these regulations that would affect us all. And in some of these cases, take these kinds of careful choices that we've been working on and are working on out of our hands. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
If I can go first.
Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's a good reminder of the importance of, I know I've been following House Bill 1110 pretty closely, but I know that there's been some changes to it lately. So I'm not quite sure what, where it's landed. So I was curious if there's plans for a legislative briefing to come before council, before the end of session, or before the end of session.
I actually wanted to follow up with you prior to the meeting to get some clarity on what specifically you're looking for. As we know, the session is getting close to ending. Happy to schedule something prior to the end of session. But if you could perhaps provide me after the meeting or now some specificity, then we could ensure our lobbyist, who would need to attend remote prior to the end of session, but we could get him here.
Sure. I looked through years past, and there had been opportunities for council to establish legislative priorities as early as November or December prior to session. And then during session, council received periodic updates of where those priorities were, where were priority bills through the session, how would the county, how would the city weigh in for or against any measures, what types of things would hurt the work that we do, what types of things would support the work we do. I know there's an annexation bill, there's a lot of gun bills out there, there's a lot of labor bills, there's a lot of really important things going on. And I feel that the weekly briefings are helpful, but only for just a narrative of what's happening in Olympia as a whole. But it's not clear on the ways that the city's participating in this legislative session. So as a council, I don't feel like we've been updated on ways that we can actively participate in session, the ways that the city's been participating as well. So, and it feels different from years past of the ways that the council's been kept up to date throughout the whole session and been involved.
And I can't speak to previous years. I recall a briefing at the end of session and perhaps prior to session. I don't recall periodic briefings during council, perhaps there was. And I appreciate that you mentioned the weekly updates, because council does receive those documents each week. And I think for us, there was a lack of clarity of what the questions were, because there wasn't any feedback from, that I'm aware of, when those, when those weekly briefings were sent to council. So I think for me, and happy to bring our lobbyist here, I think I could still use some help on specificity at this point in the legislative session. I understand, I hear you, where you're saying, I wish this, I think you're saying, I wish this would have come sooner. But now we are where we are. And so what is it that you would want the lobbyist to share next week or the following week, with session ending, I believe on the 24th of April?
Sure. Yeah, at this point, it's moot, because session is so far advanced. However, there had been requests in January to ask when we would be receiving updates. And it was postponed quite a bit, and now at this point, it hasn't happened at all. So the weekly updates are a list of what the city's tracking, but it doesn't show what we're supporting, what we're against, what actions have been taken, public comments, or testifying or whatnot. So while it's helpful of what the city's tracking, I'm not sure what that means particularly. So my list would have been real long for any.
I mean, as a partial response, perhaps a briefing on 1110, and I think there was a lot splitting ordinance that would have some related effects, if I remember. That was 12 something or other. But yeah, I guess I've been tracking that in terms of the inside baseball aspects of it through the media, but not through the reports, which are mostly just tracking them, not really strategy.
I'll interject here, just a little history. So yes, it's true that in the past, we did set our legislative priorities. And I think the nature of the reports that we used to get from our former lobbyists were different, because they used to actually did, they did tell us which ones we were weighing in on, which ones we were staying neutral on, which ones we were weighing in against. And so that, I think, the reports that we're getting now, I believe are just kind of letting us know which bills are still live and which ones are having hearings. So I think it's a valid concern. I've also talked to administration a couple of times about getting a briefing, and it's just kind of, at this point, it just hasn't materialized. So I think in the future, I think we need to think about how we want that interaction to happen. And I do believe it's important for the lobbyists to come and give us a briefing. And I would also like to weigh in on the reports that we're getting. I just, again, haven't had time to sort of specify. I want to go find an old one, but somehow my emails are all archived, and I can't access them anymore. So we did, used to get a much more robust report, I think. And so maybe we can talk a little bit about the format of the report that we're getting as well, that could give us weekly time, and then maybe have more frequent briefings from the lobbyists, even if they have to be on Zoom. Councilmember Fossey, and then Councilmember Vogel.
I'll just quickly maybe recommend before, specific policy cutoffs and fiscal cutoffs would be a good time to have maybe those presentations in addition to the long list of tracking. But that would be an opportune time in case there was way in that we wanted to do. So having it prior to those cutoffs, so that actual impact or advocacy could happen.
Thank you. Councilmember Vogel.
I learned today that House Bill 1167 died like a horrible, horrible death. So I want to hear about that. And there was also a lot of, and that was on Twitter, so that's where I got that information. Way back Monday, January 23rd, and I've also asked some questions of Nick, who, Deputy Mayor Harper, who answered my questions. But I've got all sorts of stuff, like why are housing items grouped in law and justice? Tax to increase law enforcement impact fees, State versus Blake, why are we opposing it? You know, all of these very important, increased middle housing and single-family designations. My point is, oh, and I was, okay, I'll get to my point. I was sick but watching, that's when I was sick, Ben, sick but watching a, the meeting take place when Councilmember Ryan asked specifically, when are we going to get that briefing? And it still hasn't happened. So I guess I'm just reiterating, just get the guy here, or on the Zoom, and let us ask him some questions, because he needs to give us some answers. And if he doesn't have them, then maybe he shouldn't be our lobbyist, because what are we paying for? And, and also, I would like to know, since I am so vehemently against the mayors for public safety and their agenda, I am curious how that money that we allocated towards that group is being spent, and who's lobbying for what. And that may have something to do with our city lobbyist. But all I have seen on our announcements, there are some support, oppose, just watching, you know, words, that's the words. But what is being done? Who's being talked to? And all of that stuff. So as Councilmember Ryan said, it's pretty much moot. But, yeah, get him here. Thank you.
For the record, I think it's an unfair statement to imply that our lobbyist doesn't want to come speak to our council.
I'm not saying he doesn't want to. I'm saying he needs to get here. Thank you.
And what I'm saying is, we did not get enough feedback from council outside of a council meeting onto what specifically was wanted in terms of an update. I know there was updates. And the amount of dialogue outside of meetings where there's every opportunity, every day to ask via email or phone call to Deputy Mayor Harper, or to your representative on the council, questions would have helped us to know what, what council was looking for. And so, so this, some, a lot of this is new information tonight for our staff.
Okay. I would suggest that we may go back and look at some of our previous meetings and see that we have indeed asked for information.
Thank you. I have good news. 1167 was revived. Yep, so that's good news. While I don't think a briefing before the end of session would be fruitful, a post-session briefing would be great, just to know which of the bills went through that do affect our city and things that we should be looking forward to down the pike.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwab.
Yeah, I just want to add here that I think this body here, it'd be very difficult if we all picked every bill and as a group decided which ones we wanted to support, and which we didn't. There is just a lot of legislation. It'd probably be better if we just talk a little bit more about process. I mean, my understanding is, the mayor is, is, really holds the administrative role of determining the needs of the city. And that includes a legislative agenda. I think maybe if there are an agreement that some here, and this body want to weigh in and say, as a group, we agree that this is one direction we want to go, and maybe the mayor is already supportive. But to go bit by bit, bill by bill, and try to get a united decision, everyone, I just don't think that's the role of this, of this group. But perhaps after a briefing after the session, that we start talking about maybe process and how we, we just, it'd be nice to have a united front. And we all have different opinions on how legislation should be, either supported or not. So maybe we just pick a few or pick some more important ones. We also have several legisla, or organizations that represent the city. We have the Association of Washington Cities that we're a member. We also have Snohomish County Cities and Towns. So those are our main representative groups. And most of the agendas, we follow along, and we have those discussions in those committees. So if this council wants influence, that, those would be areas that we'd want to get involved in and try to direct. Because we're not just the city of Everett, we're part of a larger group of cities. I'd like to say that Everett has significant influence, and I think we do. But really, the way we're going to really accomplish our goals is to unite with other cities. So I just hate to put the burden all just on us, or the mayor, or communication between us. This is a much larger picture, that all of us have an opportunity to get involved in the AWC, and I'd really encourage that. Thanks.
Thank you. So I'll take it upon myself to, after the legislative session ends, we can bring back before the council sort of proposal or some discussion around how the process should unfold in the future. And I'll maybe be picking Councilmember Fossey's brain on how we might bring that forward. But let's get back to our agenda. We have a motion and a second on item six. This is to establish the public hearing date for the petition for the proposed alley vacations. Do we have any more questions or comments on the item, on action item six? I was lost, too.
Thank you for keeping us focused and back on track.
Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. And now we go back to our regular action agenda. Item 11, Council Bill 2303-17, third and final reading. Adopt an ordinance to amend and close a special improvement project entitled Rotary Park Renovation, Fund 354, Program 072, as established by ordinance number 3821-21. Do I have a motion?
Councilmember Ryan moves adoption of Council Bill 2303-17.
Councilmember Tuie seconds that motion. Thank you. Questions or comments? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. Now, we'll move on to our briefing item. This item comes before the city council serving as a council committee of the whole, and is likely to be scheduled at a future meeting. Council Bill 2304-22, first reading. Adopt an ordinance approving the appropriations of the 2023 revised City of Everett budget and amending ordinance number 3910-22. Third and final reading is on April 19th, 2023. Good evening, Suzy. We have Suzy Haugen here, our finance director, to brief us.
Good evening, everybody. Before I get started, I want to take just a minute to introduce the council to our new budget manager. This is Heidi Berlantis, and she's been with us for a little over three months now. It seems like three years, right? So I just wanted to give you a chance to meet Heidi, and you'll be seeing her throughout the summer. And she's actually going to be doing some of the presenting for Budget Committee and various things. So just thought you would like to.
Welcome, Heidi.
Thank you.
Thank you for working for the City of Everett.
Yes, we're very glad to have her. She's really done a great job. Okay, so we have a lot of items to get through on this amendment. It's a very large amendment for our first budget amendment of the year. So I will go ahead and get right started right away. Again, tonight's amendment is the first amendment for the 2023 budget. In total, we'll be amending the budget by $25.2 million, which includes $3.5 million for the general government, and $21.7 million for non-general government funds. The majority of this amendment is related to reappraisal requests. We start off with general government proposed appropriations. These represent unspent budget authority from 2022 being brought forward to 2023 for purchases or projects that were not completed by year end. The first reappraisal is for a contract that was entered into last year for an upgrade to the city's risk management software. The work on that contract will be completed this year, and $16,000 is requested. The library is asking to reappropriate $23,000 to complete purchases for goods that were not received until this year. And we have three Department of Commerce grants with a combined total of $445,000 remaining that will fund work continuing on into 2023, including periodic updates, middle housing, and the Housing Action Plan. We have a few human needs grants that were not completed prior to year end due to staffing challenges at several of our nonprofits. This This $37,000 reappraisal will allow them to complete their work this year and fund the $10,000 contingency. Similarly, we have cultural arts grants that we're requesting to carry forward, $15,000 for the Children's Museum, $2,500 for the Riverside Neighborhood, and $4,750 for the Delta Neighborhood. We have $22,500 to complete the COVID-19 art project, which will be installed at the Evergreen Branch Library in June. And there's $200,000 for the Land Acknowledgement Project. This includes a $40,000 grant from the National Endowment for the Arts. We expect this artwork to be fully installed by August. The next several reappraisal requests come from the Police Department. They include $50,000 for derelict vessel removal and associated overtime. We have $45,000 for the Boathouse Repair Project, which is just a portion of the total amount needed to complete the work. There is also $23,000 requested in the amendments section. There is $116,000 to complete the acquisition of police jumpsuits and vest carriers. Due to supply chain issues, they were not able to take full delivery of those items until this year. We have three lateral hires that will receive their final payment this year. The $35,000 reappraisal is necessary to complete this commitment. And there's $57,000 to continue to use PST services for background checks to facilitate the police hiring process for police officers. An additional $6,000 is requested for these services in the amendments section. Reappropriations continue with a variety of items that together total just under $318,000. These items were purchased last year but not received until this year and include taser replacements, ammunition, helmets, boat motor replacements, and dive team dry suits. And the last general government reappraisal request is for unspent street overlay funds in the amount of $388,000 that will be used to fund a portion of the 2023 street overlay We begin general government amendments with the distribution of the labor contingency that was set aside for labor contract provisions. The total amount needed is $7.9 million. Just under $7.2 million was set aside in Fund 09, non-departmental, in the original 2023 budget. This amendment requests an additional appropriation of $764,000 to close that gap. We have a partial year compensation for a new accounting technician in the Finance Department, which is being added to accommodate the workload for providing financial services to the business improvement areas, so the DEA and the new ESDA, as you may recall. There are four ARPA-funded mental health professionals. Two will be assigned to the Fire Department and two to the libraries. Funding will be transferred from the General Government Special Projects Fund 155 to pay for these positions. There is a correction to the part-time judicial assistant position. This is a small one. It adds back $7,800 to fund .05 of an FTE. And we have a request for $174,000 to fund the new library security services agreement, which includes adding an additional security officer to help address the incidents at both libraries. The police have, have received three grants, a boating grant, a stop violence grant, and a wellness program grant totaling $221,000. This amendment will provide the formal spending authority for those grants. The police need $14,664 to replace forensic computer equipment, which is failing. This equipment is used by the city's digital and video forensic detectives. There is the other half of the request to fund the PST background services to assist in the police hiring process. The total amount needed, including the reappraisal, is $81,313. The Police Department is also requesting $10,500 to fund LexisNexis Risk Solution Services, which is a program used by police investigative teams to obtain information and evidence for active cases. And the last general government amendment is for GoTeno deployment and Android team awareness kits that are valued at $62,000. This equipment was awarded to the Police Department from the City of Seattle's Urban Area Security Initiative, or UASI, grant. An additional $6,000 is requested to fund the cellular data plan that is needed for those devices. The next slides are for non-general government reapprisations, starting with $1 million for Park CIP III projects that were not completed prior to year-end. This includes $118,000 for the Jetty Restroom Improvement Project and $900,000 for Thornton-Sullivan Park Playground Replacements. We have $300,000 for the CIP I to carry forward funding for the police South Precinct restroom and locker remodel, and $300,000 for CIP IV for the Eclipse Mill Park and Riverfront Trail improvements. There is 3.3 million to fund vehicle replacements that were not completed prior to year-end. More than half of that amount is for fire trucks. And we have $790,000 for street and alley vacation funded projects that will continue into 2023, including a sidewalk on 18th Street between Maple and Jackson Park and pedestrian access from the inner urban trail to YMC. The next two slides detail the reappraisal request for ongoing ARPA projects. The unspent funds total 12.2 million. I won't go into detail tonight, as Julie Willey has recently briefed council on our ARPA projects, but they are up here and listed in your packets with the amounts remaining. And this slide shows the second half. We have quite a long list of projects that we're working on through ARPA. Gulf is requesting to reappropriate $211,000 for the Walter Hall roof replacement and Legion netting replacement. The library is requesting $90,000 to complete a variety of projects and purchases, including One Everett One Book, furnishings for both libraries, technology, and website redevelopment. IT has two projects originally funded last year that are continuing on into 2023, including our UKG timecaping and attendance software and ESO medical tablet replacement project for a total of $147,671. The Police Department has three projects from the Criminal Justice Fund, including MDC replacements for $379,000, the firing range bullet trap for $520,000, and additional funding for the Boathouse Repair Project. Moving on to non-general government proposed amendments, we have a request for $697,000 from CIP III to fund Forest Park Restoration Program, Edgewater Park Restoration, Thornton A Sullivan Park Caretaker House demolition, Hannah Brook Fitness Trail improvements, and 40th Place Slide Repair. There is $250,000 in street and alley vacation funds for the Silver Lake Trail projects, $50,000 from the Senior Center Reserve Fund for roof and window repairs, $5,000 to replace the Fire Department's inflatable rescue boat, and $809,000 to restore transit staffing, including six fixed route operators, one customer service tech, one security officer, a transportation maintenance technician, and one operations supervisor. And we've arrived at the last slide. These last amendment requests include four items from the Criminal Justice Fund, including $206,000 to fully implement the BOLAP program, $37,000 from the JAG grant for portable ballistic shields for patrol cars and forensic investigation equipment, $68,000 in legislative funding for use of force and duty to intervene training, and $6,600 for additional funding for the Boathouse Repair work. The total amount requested for Boathouse Repair work from both the general government and non-general government resources is $125,709. The library has received $100,000 from the Gates Foundation for Library Services. We'll be recognizing the revenue in this amendment, and we'll be coming back later for the expenditure approval once the library board has determined how to best invest these funds in library services. And finally, we have a $183,000 grant from the AWC for the city's co-responder program. These funds will support the program by funding software development for case management. And that concludes budget amendment number one.
Thank you. Do we have questions or comments? Councilmember Vogely.
Thank you so much. I wrote them down here. There they are. Okay. For, let's see, it looks like number eight or page eight, slide eight, with the police grants, do any of them come with a requirement for matching funds? I know grants typically are free, but I remember the cops grant.
So we have a boating grant. I don't believe there's any match on that. There's the stop violence grant and the wellness program. I don't believe there's any matches on any of those.
Okay. Thank you. And wellness program. I'm sure they're all thumbs up, but wellness program for sure. And the UASI equipment, there's been lots of talk about, you know, dogs that aren't actually dogs, and I just want to make sure we're not getting any robot dogs. All right.
There's no matching dollars for UASI funds.
Okay.
I used to work in the program.
Oh, okay, cool. And I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmembers Arlingo.
Well, a quick one that relates to my earlier comment about the street vac, or the alley vacation, I guess, or the street or alleys. I didn't see that in the notes here and I'm in the, in the, in that earlier item six. Does the city collect revenue when someone petitions to vacate a street or an alley and the city chooses to do so?
Yes, we do. And those funds are allocated to Fund 145, which is our property acquisition fund, and they're split, it's either 40, 60, or 45, 55, between these special street and alley vacation funded projects, those sidewalks and access that I was mentioning earlier. And then the other part goes into just a general account in our property acquisition account to fund property acquisition or, you know, the sort of ongoing M&amp;O costs that our real property manager and his assistant in, you know, for things like appraisals and other things like that.
Great, Vogely, thank you.
Councilmember Schwab.
Yeah, I had a question about the senior center. We, we contract out the management, but the building, we're actually responsible for its maintenance and upkeep.
Yes, so our contract with the Volunteers of America, we retain responsibility for maintaining the corn shell of the building, which the roof and window replacements would be included, and the VOA would be responsible for everyday maintenance.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. And Suzy, you will be back before us on the 19th for final reading on this one.
Yes.
Thank you very much. If anyone has any comments for Suzy, you can always send her an email. That brings us to the end of our agenda, and we will now go into our executive session, which is expected to last 20 minutes with possible action to follow. which is expected to last twenty minutes with possible action to follow.
The City Council is back from our executive session and I will call on our deputy city attorney, Ramsey Rammernan.
Thank you all. The city attorney's office and administration is asking the council to vote to authorize the mayor to sign a settlement agreement in Edge versus City of Everett that will require the city to revise its quick service probationary license ordinance, to have the minimum dress requirement match the minimum dress requirement of our lewd conduct ordinance, and to pay the plaintiffs $500,000. Before the council votes, I want to provide an overview of the history of this legislation and litigation. I also want to emphasize that the conduct that I'll be discussing momentarily, there's no evidence that the plaintiffs in this lawsuit engaged in any of this conduct. This was other stand owners. So the city's interaction with bikini barista stands began in 2009 when we had dozens upon dozens of citizen complaints about the stands. Our subsequent investigations revealed that the coffee stands were not just selling coffee, but they were selling sex shows, allowing customers to have physical contact with the baristas. We had a problem of men masturbating near the stands. And it was a very, it was part of a business model. The stand owner was encouraging this conduct because he was also selling the baristas OxyContin and he wanted them to earn tips so they could buy the drugs. In response to this, the city investigated. We prosecuted four baristas. The stand owner that was engaging this conduct disappeared and was later declared dead, so he was never prosecuted. But at the time, it looked like those prosecutions had solved the problem and appeared to have gone away. But unfortunately, that was incorrect. Instead, what had happened is new stand owners had learned from the mistakes of the baristas the first time and were much more circumspect in their conduct. This came out in 2013 when the county asked the city to investigate allegations that a county deputy sheriff was working with the stand owner trading information about investigations for sexual favors. The city did a large investigation that ultimately determined that there were two stand owners that were engaging and pressuring baristas to engage in this illegal conduct, underpaying them, forcing them to have to try and get more and more tips. The baristas, as I said, were being underpaid. They were pressured. Many instances of them being sexually assaulted. And in one case, one of the stand owners had been pressuring a 16-year-old to engage in this conduct. The police had problems investigating the stand owners, however, because they were smart enough to create a paper trail and have all the baristas sign pledges not to engage in illegal conduct. They weren't at the stands when this was occurring. So the city had to conduct an extensive investigation to prove that the conduct had been so pervasive that the stand owners had to know it. Ultimately, this did work and two of the stand owners and the deputy sheriff were convicted. One stand owner was convicted for promoting prostitution. The other one was convicted for exploitation of a minor. But the city took away two broad lessons from these investigations. The first was that the only way to stop this illegal conduct was to get to the stand owners and motivate the stand owners to police their employees and not allow this conduct, much less encourage it. Second lesson we learned is that the current tools the city had were inadequate to get to the stand owners without engaging in an extremely expensive and burdensome investigation. So the city sought additional tools and that resulted in the development of the quick service probationary license ordinance that was passed in 2017. Under this ordinance, the coffee stands and similar businesses, we adopted a dress code for them, which required employees to at least be wearing shorts and tank tops. And then we had a licensing regime, which made the stand owners responsible for enforcing the dress code. Upon a first violation, they then had to get a probationary license. And then if they had two more violations, they would lose that license and therefore have to shut down. And so that was the original ordinance. The dress requirement, the thought was that if they had shorts and tank tops, it would be a lot harder for them to flash, a lot easier to detect. But the real key was the licensing that made the stand owners responsible for enforcement. We also at that time amended our lewd conduct standard to outlaw the G-string and pasty outfits that were so prevalent at the stands, requiring a mini bikini. This was approved by the council in the summer of 2017 and almost immediately, we were sued for both these laws challenged in federal court. In November of 2017, the federal judge entered a preliminary injunction based on the First Amendment against the licensing ordinance and under the Fourteenth Amendment for vagueness against both ordinances. The city was able to immediately appeal that ruling to the Ninth Circuit. In 2019, the Ninth Circuit vacated that preliminary injunction, ruling in favor of the city on all grounds. That sent the case after the plaintiffs attempted to go to the Supreme Court, sent the case back to the trial court. And in the fall of 2020, the plaintiffs indicated their intent to pursue their equal protection challenges, both to the lewd conduct amendment and to the dress code. After discovery, we had cross motions for summary judgment that were filed in March 2021. And then the court, the case sat there for 18 months until we got the ruling in November of 2022. In that ruling, the court largely ruled in the city's favor. It confirmed on the First Amendment grounds that the amendments were valid. It rejected the vagueness challenges to both statutes. And it ruled that our lewd conduct ordinance, despite the fact that it did have gender differences, did not violate equal protection. But it also ruled that the licensing ordinance violated equal protection even though its dress standard was gender neutral. And that's where the case is now. We have, if we want to continue and pursue an appeal in this case, unfortunately, we would first have to go through an expensive damages trial and then pursue an expensive appeal through the Ninth Circuit. And those were costs that we'd have to incur even if we prevailed. If we lost, we, plaintiffs are seeking $3 million in damages and attorney's fees. So if we lost, we'd be facing a much higher cost. So with this settlement, we think that because the settlement allows us to keep our probationary license ordinance just with the reduced dress requirement, it still gives us our best tool to require stand owners to make sure their employees are not engaging in illegal conduct and discouraging them from pressuring their employees to engage in illegal conduct. So it provides additional protection for the baristas. The amendment also includes a notice requirement. So those who have to get a probationary license also have to post notice and information on sexual trafficking and other resources for the baristas. We'll be developing that notice, but it's part of the general agreement. And I think it still leaves the city with a strong tool to make sure that we don't have a repeat of what we uncovered in 2013. And also, it ends this, it'll end this legislation, I mean this litigation. So are there any questions?
Any questions or comments? Did we make a motion?
Not yet. We're asking to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the settlement agreement with the payment of $500,000 and the agreement to amend the dress code.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Now, do we have any additional questions or comments before we call the roll? Councilmember Vogel.
Just really quickly, I'm thrilled that the baristas are, oh, I didn't write this down. I'm glad we're for the baristas and against the people that are trying to get them to do the things that they don't want to do. So thank you for explaining all of that.
Councilmember Sarlingo.
I guess just like to make it clear, this is one of those things that are not fun to do, but we take the situation we've got. And I am, I am satisfied that the city entered into doing this whole process as a way to protect vulnerable people and to support and protect our community members who were near these stands and to civilize this to the degree that we can. So I'm mindful that sometimes the law is what it is and we do the best thing possible, all things considered, even though we might well win such an appeal, we think we would. That might be a periodic victory, especially if we feel like, as you say, we can get the tools we need with what we have and minimize the risk and then protect, protect these vulnerable communities. So thank you for the summary and that's how I look at it anyway.
Any other questions or comments? Clerk, would please take the roll.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Tui?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
President Stonecypher?
Yes. And with no further business, we are adjourned.